Call the meeting to order, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Missy, roll call, please.
Yep. Fritz.
Here.
Sonia.
Here.
Becky.
Here.
Libby.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
I'm gonna wait till Libby's done. Libby's, you got your mic on, Libby? No, you don't.
No.
I declare, we have a quorum. Can I get somebody to approve the minutes?
I second.
All in favor? I oppose. The ayes have it. Thank you. See here, new business. Introducing a new town staff members. Jerry Stanton, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Office for the Planning and Building Department. Come on up. Oh, how do you go over there? Oh, shake hands. Alright, my name's Fritz. So you've met Becky and Brian and everybody? Am I the last person?
He does.
Okay. Well.
Any questions?
Yourself. Just go ahead and give them a little spiel about what you do, what you've done in the past.
Oh, okay. Well, before I came here, I was a Building Inspector for the City of Tipton. Before that, I was a Building Commissioner for the City of Peru. And before that, I was Code Enforcement and Building Inspector under Mayor Goodnight in Kokomo, where I live. And before that, I was working carpenter with about forty years' experience, both in non-union and the union. And last fifteen, no, take that back, eighteen years. I was a union rep in the Kokomo, Lafayette area. And now here I am.
So, so did you move to Fortville, move the area or?
No.
No? Okay.
I'm not, I'm a Trent, I'm an adopted Hoosier. I'm not from Indiana.
Okay.
Sure, from a big city a long time ago. Met my wife here. We have two children. They're on their own now. So.
Well, thank you. Nice meeting you and any other questions?
Sound qualified.
Yeah. Glad to have you.
Thank you. I'll try not to let you guys down.
Thank you. Alright.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
On behalf of the department, we're obviously very happy to have Jerry with us. He's already been getting involved in a lot of different things, been very helpful. So he's a great guy and we're lucky to have him.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
See you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Hey, thank you. Now Laura Val- Val- Valenzuela. Office Assistant for the Police Department. Come on up. I see you brought your family too.
I'm glad you didn't tell me about this part.
Well, so tell us a little bit about yourself.
Daniel. Yeah, we have four kids. They're twenty-nine, twenty-seven, twenty-three, and eight. We've been in Fishers for about four and a half years now. We're originally from California and lived our whole lives and then decided to relocate. As far as my work history, I've almost always been an administrative assistant, but I've worked for a lot of different types of places. Everything from law firms to like Morgan Stanley, I was the Branch Manager's Assistant. To heating and air conditioning company, biofuels company, I just, but it's always executive assistant or administrative assistant, whichever, same thing.
Great. Any questions? Patrick? No, I can tell you, she came in this morning well-prepared. She had three pens, two notebooks. Let's ease into this thing. Right? Thank you. Well, nice meeting you. Okay, next on the agenda, Council to Consider Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three, Three-A. Resolution to remain in the Madison County Council of Governments for the new urban area boundary and updated metropolitan planning area boundary. Joe?
I can take this. I was hoping Jerry was gonna be here, Jerry Bridges, this evening. He was gonna try to make it. He may sneak in on a ship. But every ten years when they do the census, they automatically stick us in the Indianapolis MPO area. And we felt like we've gotten really good service out of the Madison County Council of Governments, the MPO up in, they also go by Hartland, I guess it is. But if the council is willing to stay within their jurisdiction, this resolution then would help. Here comes Jerry. I knew he'd come rolling in. So, and Jared, you're coming in a little bit, just right on time. Would you want to come up and kind of explain to the council about what this resolution is gonna do for us?
Thanks for having me. And every ten years, census goes through and they review urbanized areas to determine what they're gonna do with funding and what type of funding communities are eligible for, as well as what the population is and other socioeconomic factors. And so in our case, in two thousand, Fortville was brought into our urbanized area, the Anderson Urbanized Area, as well as Ingalls. We had served Ingalls since our inception in nineteen sixty-nine. And also Daleville and a small part of Tipton County as well. In two thousand and ten, census changed methodology for how they calculated that, not urbanized areas, but who they gave preference to. So it went to larger areas as opposed to smaller. And there's fourteen MPOs in the state of Indiana and Anderson's one of them. So when they made that change, communities are also, if they had been in an area before, they were given a choice of whether they wanted to stay in their existing area or they wanted to go into the area that they had basically changed. Your council approved to stay in our area in two thousand and ten. And we'd done work with the town of Fortville back in the nineties as well. So this basically is a resolution for you to decide whether you want to stay in our urban area or you want to stay, or you want to go to Indianapolis. That's pretty much what it is, in terms of things that we do for you. I mean, we funded a lot of projects for you. But we've also been involved in a lot of other things in your community, your downtown guidelines, your comp plan, your downtown plan, your thoroughfare plan. Communities we serve, we try to give discounts for those. Communities we don't serve specifically in our area, though, we'll probably charge them a higher price. So there's a lot of things you don't see that we do data collection wise that you may benefit from. We do data collection for nineteen counties in the state of Indiana. So other than the state of Indiana, we're the largest data collector in the state. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or anything? Or any, 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 well, on this map, I find it interesting that Ingalls is up by the highway. And we know they own all that area. So I think maybe in the future, we kind of need to know, like roundabouts, anything that's going on up there because that's gonna affect us also. Because already people are complaining about thirteen and was it nine hundred north up there or something?
Eight hundred and nine hundred. Eight hundred is the one that's closest to the interstate. There are actually one of our former employees is co-town manager and the planning director for Ingalls now, which our loss, but it's, I think, a good thing for the town of Ingalls. They really kind of worked hard in the last year, year and a half to try to start to change things in a different direction for their community. They're doing a pretty good job of it. They realize that there's a lot of issues, especially at eight hundred and thirteen. We meet quarterly with Indy Greenfield, our staff does. And we have a lot of projects that we bring up for discussion and that's one of them. They are gonna put a stoplight there. We try to get them to put a roundabout. Long term, we like to see something more like what a diverging diamond is, what you'd see at exit two-ten, only it'd be a smaller version of that. That's a safer way of getting through that. They did drop, they did drop the speed in a small area there. They do know we have problems.
There's gonna be a lot of truck traffic up there with that industrial mark.
They, actually Ingalls has got a project through us to improve eight hundred from the county line, the Hamilton County Line to State Route thirteen. That's under design right now. And they're gonna put in some roundabouts on eight hundred. And the developers have agreed unless something goes awry to continue the road that goes back out through eight hundred, there is a covenant within that that they can't dump a lot more traffic on to State Road thirteen. The developers of those property can't. So our goal is to push that traffic down to eight hundred. That's what we wanted originally. That's what we recommended. But we're not a governing body, so we're a recommending entity in terms of studies we do. So we'd recommended that that traffic flow all go down to eight hundred. That's what the town wants. So tentatively, right now, they have an agreement. I don't know if it's formalized yet with the remaining development to put a road that comes down to eight hundred. So that, because in that, does have a light there, the truck stop. Long term, it'd be nice to basically, and I think eventually Indy will do that. They'll cut off all cross traffic and it will be right in, right out only. In the short term, though, that's the fix. And town really has worked hard to negotiate that with the developers. So hopefully that turns out. It will be an improvement. I think if you've seen some of the things they've done now, some of the quality of the development they've gotten is quite a bit better than it used to be. I think if they could go back, they'd probably tell you they might not want it to be the way it is. But now you're in a situation where you're trying to retrofit what's already there. So it's much tougher to do a retrofit than it is to put it in right. But we do know, because a couple of our employees live in your community, and so they come that way to work.
Yeah. That's where we get the complaints, or we hear it on Facebook, on, you know, why don't they do something about that? Well.
And it is on Indy's radar. I will tell you that even if they want to put a light in, it's about five years. It's, it's hard to get through federal aid. Joe can attest to that. And they have to do studies and everything else prior to anything they would do with that. So yeah, it, it, it does take a while. So but I, and I, I will tell you that they know the long-term solution there is not what they're doing now. But putting in lights is what's, I'll say, is warranted now. They'd be very careful when they make changes as to what they can and can't do from a liability perspective. So we had some fatalities there at eight hundred and thirteen a few years back. So that gets anybody's attention. It definitely gets Indy's and it gets ours as well.
Right. I agree. Alright, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So I'm, please, somebody may, well, somebody make a motion to stay in the Madison County Central Government's.
Approve the Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three dash three-A to approve remaining in the new urban area boundary and updated metropolitan planning area boundary for Anderson, Indiana.
I second.
All in favor? I oppose. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Jerry, do we need to get this resolution back to you or do I need to get it to Indy?
Perfect. Shouldn't it say nay or yay on there?
Only just the yay sign it.
Okay.
Alright, chief. Are you ready to, to give us an update on the Fortville Police Department Annual Report?
I am, sir. So, sorry it took me a little bit longer this year to, to get it to you. Trying to compile accident data this year to see where our hotspots are. Obviously, there's some traffic concerns through town that we all know about at Broadway and Merrill. Out at four hundred, officers are responding to that. And I saw the paper did put an article on that here recently, which was nice, gets some attention to that. But I wanted to make sure I had all the right stats for the year and not just kind of give you what we know as of now. So I think the big thing for us last year was our calls for service increased by forty-one point eight-six percent. A lot of that has to do with the economic growth and development. The more people, the more people coming through the area as just the area grows in general. You know, Ingalls is growing in Anderson and Pendleton and North Ingalls up that area. I think that we're just seeing more calls because we're seeing more people. And you know, you go through the breakdown and nothing really stood out to me that was shocking. So our, our major crimes are down. We didn't have as many major crimes. We did have the one shooting, but that's not, I guess, an unusual event. It should be an unusual event, but in the, under those circumstances, it wasn't unusual. And it makes it, we handled that the best we could, make sure somebody went to where they belong. Let's just put it that way. We do have continuous coverage twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Our lightest area coverage is in the mornings from six AM till noon. That's not as staffed as from noon until six AM. Those are our heavy times. That's when I focus on having the most officers out. Sometimes there's three, sometimes there's two. If a reserve comes out, there could be four in that timeframe. Weekends, we try to hit it a little bit heavier because there is a lot more traffic. And with spring coming, there's gonna be more people on the roads. There's gonna be more people walking around town, more people hopefully visiting our businesses and our town and community. So that's when I'm trying to focus our enforcement actions. Our warrant arrests were down, not compared to two thousand and twenty-one, that was COVID. But looking back from seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then two thousand and twenties when COVID hit, normally we have between fifty and seventy warrant arrests. We had thirteen last year. It went up eight point three percent from twelve to thirteen. But that's because the jail was basically closed to all warrants. Unless it was a serious violent warrant, the jail wasn't taking them. So we had to just catch and release at that point. Other than, that did get fixed. That, as of this week, the sheriff opened everything up for everything. So that makes it a little bit easier for my guys that we're not trying to play taxi service all over a five-county area. You do see that we only had one fatal accident in town for the year of two thousand and twenty-two. It was at nine hundred East Broadway. It was a head-on collision. Unfortunately, two people lost their lives on that one. And the fact team was called out for that, which is our fatal accident crash team. They're the reconstructionists. They're the ones that do all the measurements. Those are the experts in the field. It's compiled from members from not only our department, but from the Sheriff's Department, New Powell, Greenfield. And I don't know, I don't believe McCordville has anybody on the fact team. But it's basically everyone in the county pitches in and gives their experts in crash reconstruction and throws them to this team. We had one Narcan usage, which was good. It went down unfortunately this morning. Greenfield had three. So that generally follows suit with Fortville because some of our drugs come from that area. And if they're getting overdosed, means there's a bad batch of narcotics somewhere that people are taking and they're having to use Narcan. So we're expecting that. Use of forces, we had eleven for the year. Six were empty hands, where they just had to put hands on somebody and maybe forcefully put their arm behind their back. It's not just the standard handcuffing where we say, hey, turn around, put your hands behind your back. And they do. It's more of it, they had to touch the person and use a little bit of force to do that. Those are generally your empty hands. We did have three vehicle pursuits, which ended safely. Suspect in custody, zero tasers, zero teddy force, and two K-nine where we assisted other agencies. One was CBS in Greenfield. It got robbed last January. They requested a K-nine. Sergeant Archer was on duty. He went down to assist. The K-nine made apprehension. Another one was in Lawrence, same thing, K-nine apprehension. They took off and bailed into a woods. Dog tracked the suspect and got K-nine apprehension there. So the dog's not only assisting in our community, but it's helping all the other communities as well. So the past years that we've done yearly reports, I don't ever remember putting in accident data. We, in, in Fortville city limits, town limits, there was a hundred and twenty total collisions. We responded to more of that. If you look at our calls for service, I think there were a hundred and thirty-two non-injury accidents, and I don't remember how many injury accidents, but it's in the calls for service page. But in town, there was a hundred and twenty, seventeen resulting in injury, twenty-five total injuries reported, four resulting in incapacitating injury, six total incapacity injuries reported, six collisions resulting in possible injury, six possible injuries reported. And then our two fatalities that we've talked about. That's a big breakdown. I put a heat map in there. And all this report will be going online for public view when I get with Andy this week. And we'll, we'll put it in there into the town's webpage. But if you look at the heat map, the majority of the accidents are right along Broadway. And then we have quite a few down at Mount Vernon, but most of those are green, which means it's just a property damage. And a lot of that is just high school kids backing into a pole or backing into each other or a bus clipped a pole. We have to take a report, something like that. Most of the injury accidents that we took were along Broadway. If you expand this heat map out, most of them are along Broadway, most of them, not most of them, the majority of them were at Broadway and Merrill. And I think there's discussions with the new Broadway project, how that's gonna look, and hopefully we can get some safety to that intersection. The following pages are the reasons for the accidents. A lot of the reasons, if you'll notice, that the officers, when they compile the data and they put it in, are driver distracted, which is cell phone, children, radio, I dropped something, I was smoking, I was eating, I was doing something other than driving. That's the majority of the, the accidents, along with unsafe lane movement, where they're merging together in two lanes or someone spears over into their other lane. They're not staying in their lane properly, which again is distracted driving and then failure yield the right away. And a lot of those, simply people just don't see with the four lanes on Broadway. They don't see that other car coming in the far lane, so they go ahead and pull out and they end up getting hit. But those were the, the three main factors of all the accidents that we had in town. Moving on to revenue generated. I've got all the information from the clerk's office attached as the reports. Our revenue did go up about, excuse me, seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Maybe eight thousand dollars. A lot of that is because the gun permits. So in two thousand and twenty-one, we got partial, they, they took away the permitting fees for gun permits. And then two thousand and twenty-two, the state just said, instead of losing that income, we're gonna write you a check for what you would normally make in a year. And that's where some of that money was made up. So that's majority of, of where the, the large percentage of the income came. Another one was our, our franchise fees. Other than that, you have all the reports. I am proud to say, our community is great. Our Shop With A Cop donations this year were twelve thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, which is huge because we only spent, due to Walmart and their granting, they, they give us basically a matching grant. We pay for whatever and then they pay for the other half. This year, we've spent five thousand forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Walmart matched the other half. We were able to, I believe, service twenty-two kids, gave them all five hundred dollars apiece. And then if you look at the ending balance for the end of the year, we have quite a bit of money in there because our community is pretty generous. They like helping the kids. They like helping people. You know, I actually turned down money this year because of that reason and told them if they can use it somewhere else. And normally I would never do that. But this is a completely, completely funded by donations. No tax dollars ever get spent. And I didn't want to take away from somebody that may could, could have used it somewhere else. And we have that large amount in there that, that could fund us for several more years. So props to our community and all the businesses and the people that make the donations. It's one of my best days the whole year. I think it's one of all the cops' best days in the whole year, just to see the smiles on the kids' faces. So from there, if you have questions, oh, sorry, one more thing. Our joint tactical team, our SWAT team, we had no callouts in Fortville, which is good. They did have twelve callouts. There were no injuries to officers. One suspect was declared deceased after sustaining a self-inflicted gunshot wound. One additional callout, use of force was used by chemical munitions, which meant they shot gas into the house. The suspect then surrendered. They served four high-risk search warrants, three suicidal subjects, one surveillance incident, three barricaded subjects, and one high-value personal security detail. Which means someone, governor's office, presidential, something like that came into the Hancock County area and they were tasked to provide security for them. So currently, we don't have anyone on the team. I think tryouts are in April and I think I have two guys wanting to try out. We used to commonly staff three officers on the team, but I've come off the team and now I'm just a basically a consultant. All the chiefs are consultants for that. And some of the younger guys are just getting enough tenure now to where if they apply for the team, that they'll have enough tenure that they can, they can be on the team. Because it requires two years full-time service. And if they don't have that, it takes the one hundred percent team vote and a one hundred percent chief vote to allow them on the team if they don't have that. So, and then we didn't do any operation pullover this year, just due to the lack of manpower and us shifting offices and doing all that. We really didn't have a full staff towards, till the end of the year. So the road was mainly our, our focus. Our accomplishments are on the back. So we raised money for Shop With A Cop. We did host a Reserve Academy. I have one reserve officer in field training right now. And our last officer to be certified through ILA is currently about halfway through. So we don't have anybody else to go to ILA. So that means I will actually have a full road staff when he graduates in April. Knock on wood. We conducted one copy with the cop event. I'd like to make that more strictly because we just didn't have the manpower and we're, we were finding coverage for the streets. We did receive the Bulletproof Vest Grant. Again, it's a fifty percent matching grant. Last year, we received the Small Rural Tribal Body Cam Grant for replacements. And we did implement all-new body cams for all the officers. We updated almost all the laptop computers in the in-car. We certified one officer in CIT, which is very important. We got all the installed camera systems in the town hall and the areas of the town, coordinated with, with Joe and everybody, the Parks Department in town, to make sure we had access to view everything and make sure that we can provide a secure environment throughout the town, not only in Town Hall or through the Police Department, but in the parks and things like that. And make sure that we can provide a secure environment throughout the town, not only in town hall or through the police department, but in the parks and things like that. Um, did all the town sponsored events, Winterfest, Fourth of July, Halloween on Main, all that good fun stuff. We like to do, uh, we assisted in Cammy's cause, which we always do, and we also assisted in the Blazer eighty-eight, which is the Veterans Foundation. Um. And then we did the national night out at the Hancock County Fairgrounds where we helped get backpacks and school supplies to children in need. The goals for twenty twenty-three, we're going to continue to build partnerships. We're going to host two coffee with a cop functions. I'd like to put on two more reserves, which we have a pile of applications in my office that we need to go through. Um, hire and train one full-time officer to fill a open position. That gentleman has already been vetted through our. Um, hiring process or our last hiring process, he was the last one on the list. And we had talked to the um. Police commission probably in September. About his approval, so he is waiting to go to public safety medical to get his medical and psychological done. Uh, whenever they contact him and then I'll have to meet with the police commission again, once we get those results. I want to certify my last two officers in C I T. That will make all the full-time officers. Um, C I T certified, which is critical incident trained. Um, it helps people in mental crisis. It helps people who are having a tough day. And instead of just taking people to jail, it helps them talk to them and realize what the true problem is. It doesn't just say, you know, it used to be, we'd be like, you're causing a problem, you're going to jail, disorderly conduct, we'll see you later, we'll deal with you later. But we keep dealing with the same person. So now, um, the critical incident team officers. They go out and they try to find the root of the problem and they use community resources to help solve those problems. So we don't have that continual problem. So I have two officers that are not currently certified, um, everyone else is, but they will get certified this year. So I believe that's a big help. Uh, we're going to do the national night out again. We've scheduled some multi-agency training. Um, with the county and other agencies for de-escalation, mental emotional subjects. There's new state policies on vehicle use of force. So we're going to do a lot of um. Mutual aid training with fire department, mutual aid training with other departments. Cause if something major happens, our department's not big enough to handle a lot. Greenfield's not big enough to handle something major in Greenfield if it happens. So we all need to train together. So when we get together, we know what we're doing. We're all on the same page. Um, my goal is to reduce property crimes and that's just being in the neighborhoods more, keeping an extra eye out on the streets. Proactive patrols. I'm going to host a meet the chief night, which was my goal last year. I didn't get it done, so that's a priority for me this year. And we're going to participate in the town sponsored events, Cammy's cause, Blazer eighty-eight and then update all in-station computers. So all the cars got an upgrade last year. Everything in the town hall is going to get an upgrade this year. Any questions? I know I threw a lot at you.
Uh, very thorough.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make sure you all had the most up-to-date information as possible. If you do have questions. Even public, my door is always open. You can email me, call me. I'm happy, I'm an open book. I'm happy to answer whatever.
Do you have a quick question?
Sure.
Right versus alarm permits?
Yep.
Is that violations or is that actual cost of permit?
That's um, violations.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other one goes into um. Or no, that's maybe just alarm permits for businesses and then O B B would be. Uh, alarm violation.
Was I, I was saying we've got more alarms than just these forty dollars apiece or twenty apiece?
Uh, twenty, but it only counts for businesses. Towns are uh, citizens don't pay for their alarm.
Oh, they don't? Okay.
It's just any business that has an alarm permit, they have to pay the fee, the application fee. Citizens don't have to pay the application fee. We don't want to tax them. If they get multiple false alarms. Then that's when we'll write the O B B for having multiple false alarm, but usually it's by the fifth one after we've talked to them. And work with their security companies to get that updated and and try to get whatever the problem is fixed.
Great. That's why I just want to clarify to note if it was the fines or if it was a permit, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Anybody from the public?
I saw a lot of golf carts coming out the last couple of days.
Yeah.
I don't know how we can.
That's going to be something. Well, I think that's something, a little education. We're going to put it on our Facebook as to whether, like with motorcycles we do every spring. You know, golf carts, hey, you know, get your inspection. Can be cited for it. Here's the possible list of fines. And I think when you throw that out there, more people are apt to come and and get their their golf cart. Yeah.
Fishers.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They actually text me the other day that listen fishers and they're like, what am I supposed to do? And I said, I don't know, call, call the police.
I I got one today for a gator from nine hundred north too. Somebody on a gator wanted to come in and do like community events or. You know, go to the post office or something. Right?
Who doesn't want to be in the hurry? Alright, well, thank you.
You know, like a little metal. Maybe like that idea.
Please, 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 guys, we're going. Is your golf cart registered?
No old business. So Joe, you're up.
I'm up. Just a few items for you this evening. Um, I've already sent. Probably most everything to you guys earlier. The uh, Broadway project. Uh, there's a schedule here that was sent to you and I think you got it in front of you. Um, they should be putting the signs out, the detour signs and kind of the road ahead, construction ahead signs. Any day now, so they look to be putting those out. Their lay down yard is actually going to be. The Catholic church lot south of Garden and Maple Street. So that's where they're going to be. Laying down all their pieces, parts and stuff that they need. They've uh, temporarily put their sign if they have to by. By law, I guess, uh, overhead our empty lot where the house sits at Madison Street, but they'll be relocating it over to. Uh, the Catholic church area as soon as they get that lay down lot done. They're still trying to get their office, their temporary office secured. Uh, I think they're getting close, but they didn't tell me where it is yet. But it looks like probably around April seventeenth and nineteenth, I think is when they're going to really get in there and get busy. Um, right now they're waiting for the utilities to relocate. So some of the utilities are in the way, they'll be relocating. Um, just know that a lot of the utilities that the town owns through there is part of this contract. They're going to be doing all the water main relocation. All the sanitary sewer and all the stormwater is part of this. So they won't start doing that relocation until, you know, they get their. Road blocked off and get ready to start cutting the ass.
How does that happen? We we continue to use what we have until they complete the project? I mean, how how does the?
Very carefully. Yes, we have to be very um, creative.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to keep the uh, the water main live. There'll be a new waterman go in. Next to it or on top of it or, you know, around it until uh, we get it all chlorinated and flushed out and it's ready to put in service and then. We'll come back and do the tie-ins and kill the old pipe. So I am, um, I've reached out to the engineer today and I've not heard back, but what I really want to do is try to uh. Put a link or put something on our website where we can start sharing this stuff. I would like to have a nice uh. Rendering of what it's going to look like so that people can go on our website and have an idea what the project's going to be. I know we've got the line drawing, the engineer drawings. It's a, it's a little bit difficult for some people to read those because it's just full of. Black lines everywhere. And if you don't know what they are, it really gets confusing. So I'm gonna see if I can't get uh. Some sort of a colored rendering showing what the out, or the final product's going to look like and see if we can't start getting this stuff out. On our website and on our Facebook to share. We are also talking about having a uh, community meeting mainly for those folks. Businesses along the Broadway corridor, um. Just so they know how it's going to affect your business during all this. Talk about scheduling, timing and how they're going to accommodate all those businesses. We're looking to maybe do the first week of April. So um.
Yeah, cause that's coming up quick, April seventeen.
Yeah, it will. It'll come up pretty fast. So um, that'll give them enough time to kind of get, get their uh, yard set up and. Get their office set up. They want to make sure to have the engineer here and end up. When they, when they do host that meeting because they want to have people there with all the answers in case somebody's got.
The other, the other thing on here, it just says phase. One A, what is phase one A and then what is phase one B?
This project. They compiled five different, there's numbers, five different uh, projects and made all one large project. And that um, helped us get the price down and they're covering all the inspection fees for that. And um, so that is part of it. The US thirty-six will be phase one of that, freeze one A. And then Maple Street, that is the trail going, uh, let's see. Nope, uh, Maple Street will be the turn lanes at the, it will map Maple Street intersection.
So it's phase one up by the the bridge? Is that where that is? Cause it says something about bridge, um, well, bridge repair.
Be doing a little bit of both or they're going to be doing multiple things in different phases. So yeah, there's a bridge on Broadway down closer to McCordville up the road. It's part of this that won't affect us here.
Okay, they're not talking about the bridge, that old bridge.
No, it's not old bridge. It's Maple Street uh, is the trail. Or the, I think on here it calls it, what is it? Mount Vernon Trails Phase One. That is the trail that goes between Garden Street and Two West. And then also there's the traffic light that goes in and to West and uh, Maple Street. Let me see if I can't get them to uh. Maybe identify these.
So this is all just trail, not even thirty-six?
Oh, this is thirty-six as well. Yeah.
Okay.
And again, these are tentative. It's their goal and hopefully by, it looks like they're showing October, November. Of this year, they should be completed. Now they've got until. Now I think the, you know, June first, twenty twenty-five, the actual completion date, but that's usually just. Making sure that the sod takes and any other little. Incidents that doesn't get completed, so. But the majority of a substantial completion should be done yet before. The end of this year.
The face two thing though shows sidewalk removal and stuff not till May of twenty twenty-four. Curve ramp removal. So is this the second part of Broadway? Phase two. Slip curve. Driveway.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and double check on them, but they may.
Yeah, they said it's going to be a two-year project.
Well, it's supposed to be thirty months. So yeah, it'd be two and a half years. But they made it sound like they were going to be substantially completed by the end of this year, but maybe they met next year.
The guys marking the road, they said, no, it's a two-year project.
Yeah, well, it's two and a half year project. Would be the first week of April. I'm only that up to the contractor and we'll share it on our Facebook pages and stuff as well, but I'm going to kind of put that on them to reach out to them.
Isn't that the one that gets a hold of Google to do, take care of the maps so that. Uh, when we start closing. Have that one, one way or one road going down Broadway that place to tell these trucks where to go.
That's a great question.
Cause I, somebody has to be in control of that. I would think it would be in dot.
You know, if you use ways, they will tell you then and the other drivers running around, they will tell you when there's. Traffic uh, construction, if there's a cop sitting on the side of the road or.
Yeah.
So they're, they're on the, they're on top of it all the time. Yeah, I actually reached out, I actually reached out to Google on that. And left them a, an email, talking to them about that intersection. Never heard any response back, so. Unless in daughter, somebody else has got better pull with those folks. I can reach out to them and see if it's something that they can incorporate in their plan. Right.
Do they notify those? Or stations like Google or Northwest or?
That's a great question. I've never had that come up. Yeah. It's going to slow traffic down. Hopefully there won't be more accidents from Maryland Broadway. For sure. Next thing is the uh, community crossings, the uh. One point three million dollars, pretty much one point four million that we're going to be doing in paving. We done a little bit of that last year, which was Ohio Street from Broadway all the way out to the town corporate limits to the east. Um, all the other streets that we're going to be working on. Uh, they're working on sidewalks now, trying to get the eighty-eight ramps done and out of the way before they come back in. They're saying as soon as a plant's open, we're first on their list. And they're looking for the last week of March or the first week of April, weather permitting. So hopefully we can get our paving done and get out there before. Broadway starts and hopefully the diverted traffic doesn't damage our new street.
So are we close to getting the sidewalks done? I mean, how close are?
Yeah, they're real close.
Yeah.
They're, they're probably.
They've been in that box ramps down by my house now.
Yeah. Anytime we do any paving projects, we have to make sure that the ramps, eighty-eight ramps are in compliance. Anytime you get federal funds. You have to make sure that those are done and done right, so. That's why they're being done first. Uh, next question I have for you is at the last meeting. Uh, we discussed the alley that's uh, the one ten no lane. Um, determine, I feel like we determined that that was a town alley or town right away. Uh, the question keeps coming up, so I thought it'd be best to ask. How do you guys feel about closing that on one end, even though it is still a public access? But just close it to the through traffic or do you want to leave it open or I want you guys to decide and give me some direction on that?
Um, what does the fire department want?
And I haven't gotten back with Mark on that yet. Um, cause I know he said that. That would be very handy to have it open if they needed access to it. So I don't really have a plan on how we would. Stop through traffic, but if we did, it would have to be something that the fire department couldn't manage or manipulate fairly easily.
He said that there are ways to do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, the lock on the balance and I think it's a good thing. Do you think just blocking it on one end is?
I block it on both ends, you're not going to be able to get your driveway.
This morning and I thought they put something like uh. You know, down by the garage, not the. That little garage, just past Steve's place. The one behind Mitch's.
I, I don't, if you can't get in down there, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
I think I'm just concerned that it's dark um, down there by the alley where that tree is and. Somebody could drive all the way down and not see, I don't know what we're putting there.
Well, it was blocked before and I don't think it was an issue once people.
Is that what you're talking about?
Once, once they figured out it was blocked, I don't think they were trying to, but Alex, what's your thoughts? You got any? One or the other?
It'd be safe.
Yeah, I concur. I don't, I don't want to make a no man's, I mean, wherever we block it, I'd like to be able to get to it both directions. If we're pushing snow or clean it up, I like the idea of a. A bollard or something where people can still walk and it could be a pedestrian walkway.
Mitch has a garage back there. It has, he can access that though for his, they usually, it's got. Yeah, roches on both sides, doors on both sides.
Yeah.
Um, and.
We block it on both ends, it'll make it that much tougher for the fire department if you need to get through. Pat might need to cruise through there some night.
Picture of the garage.
That's just for driving.
Garage just.
They've, they've almost ripped the whole soft off of that garage. It's hanging there just.
I think I did, didn't I send it to you? Okay. Yeah, that was the day. Yeah. I, I like a bollard idea, but I like it on, on two sides, not just one.
We could put a sign on the one end saying dead end or no, you know. To discourage people. I can see the concern if they get down there and they'll have to back out.
People think that that alley, like visitors to the community think, oh, there's an alley I'm going to, and they, they, they go to zip down there, especially when there's an event. Blocking Stat Street or whatever. And then they're like, oh shit.
I mean, put some reflectors on them, they can see them.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll try to get creative and come up with something if that's.
He's the chief next week. I can ask him to if he wants me to.
I'll just reach out to him tomorrow. We usually, we communicate.
So they won't be held up, but they need to get in there.
Yeah. I think one's enough. That's my opinion.
Let's see what we can do. Uh, and the other thing I've got is I sent you a little bit earlier, the. List of the, uh, twenty twenty three surplus. Inventory list. These are some of the things that we found after we. Started our move out of the town hall and the move back in. Most of the stuff toward the top is part of our actual asset inventory. That, uh, needs to be declared as surplus and taken off. Most of the other stuff is miscellaneous office, stuff like desk chairs and, and that kind of a thing, but it's always good to have that listed out. And have you guys? Okay, it to be declared a surplus so I can, uh. Find a way to get rid of.
With all of that after it's, does it get auctioned off?
My goal is I want to reach out to a couple of different auctioneers and see if, uh, anybody would. Have a place we could take it and they can auction it off, or if they'd want to come here and do it. I'd personally rather just move it. Get it out of the way and we're done with it. So they sell it. What's that?
He's, Mark has a new big place.
Does he do that? Does he take all this stuff in? Will he come and get it?
Maybe. Big trailer. I don't know. I don't want to stick my foot in that, but.
Yeah.
It used to be a place out in thirteen too, just the other side of the interstate, a left hand side.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about Don Smock? Yeah, that's an, that's an equipment auction. They probably wouldn't do. Yeah. I've got, I've got a couple of, uh. Companies in mind that I'll reach out to and see where I get the better deal for the town.
I got a question.
Yes.
Um, sign in the alley over there by Strauss. The semi is going down. Were we able to order a sign?
One's ordered, yeah.
Okay. And if he takes a picture of a truck driving in his yard. And gets their license plate, can you ticket a company like Coca-Cola? Uh, for driving in his yard? I'm just asking. No. So if he gets both.
No, there's no.
Well, he's using alley. You can't take a semi down an alley. That's. But they are.
Though.
You were getting ready to post it right now, but.
Then yeah, if they're down there, then we can like exceeded weight limits or whatever. However, it's posted, we can enforce that way. If it's not posted, there's not a lot they can do. If he drives to somebody's yard, that's more of a common courtesy thing where he should have stopped and said, hey, I messed up your yard.
Well, he says it's happened a few times this summer, so he's reaching out to me to see what. I told him to start taking pictures and we can post it on our social media website. No, they're going down Strauss Alley and they're going down to, what's the first street? Um. Center Street and then they're going in his yard. And so, um. Is, is there an ordinance that we have that you can't take semis down alleys anyway, don't we?
We've got a weight limit on our roads in town. I assume I would count.
That for an alley.
I think the, the key to, to stopping that would be to get the truck number or the license plate number, call Coca-Cola directly and say, hey, we're having some issues with this in our town. He's clipping the curb, he's cutting off.
You want me to make that phone call or you want to make that phone call?
We need to get this, get that weight limit sign out there with the ordinance number on it and then have your officer sit after doing this waiting.
I told him, there's not enough police officers to do that, but, um. If we can get, yeah.
Almost every, you go down Merle, Pearl Street in Melba, almost every corner is robed by UPS, Amazon. And then Brandon had that semi go through his yard today and there's going to be more semis.
Maple Street. Today, I noticed this morning in Maple Street at the light. They went south, took out the street sign, wrote it up the yard and then somebody going north and turning. To the east and rutted up the other side where the. Where the rocks were stacked in there along the road just today.
How'd you straighten that sign out?
I think the guy just pushed it up. I think the ground was soft enough. It just.
Well, look, I guess it could have been that sign for the way he ran over. That's how I did it.
The, the only concern I've got with this Strauss Alley. Is the fact that they've been using that for years for deliveries. They've got a garbage can that sits back there and their garbage truck goes in there and dumps it and pulls out forward. They've done it forever. Um. I almost feel like. Maybe the, the gentleman you're talking about, I talked with him about putting something in his yard, keep people from driving through his yard. Cause it might be safer for a trash truck to come up there and dump that. Pull that forward then to back into the parking lot where you don't know who's walking back there.
My dad had to do that and you, you don't want that, a, a barrier in front of your house. I mean, it just, it doesn't look very attractive. Dan Justice used to own it and that's what he had to do when it was a rental property. And I would rather not do that because I know we had to do it for. Back in the seventies when we had a semi driver living next to us. And, yeah.
Well, what we find though is you fix one problem all the time as you create another one.
All right. Well, we ordered the signs, right? He's gonna get some pictures and we'll take care of it from there. Um, that's all I got to ask. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. Somebody asked me about the trail on, uh, Fortville Pike. Apparently there's a big tree that's close to the road.
The Cypress?
I don't know. I didn't go and check it and they want to know if we're tearing it down.
Nope, we're going around it. We're going around. We don't need to. No, I, I was doing whatever we could to save that old Cypress there. Teresa was in her own, but or not her, but what is her last name? Um, that long drive that goes back there. Teresa Homer, that's it. So. For the minute, it's going to get you to. On the surplus stuff, so.
And I'm making motion to approve the surplus list. To go on auction or whatever the best way to do it.
All in favor? I oppose. The ice habit. Thank you.
And that's all I've got unless you've got more for me.
Uh, Adam?
Nothing for me tonight unless you have any questions on anything.
Nope.
Uh, Patrick, you already talked enough.
I do have one thing. Um, I am sending two officers to the funerals. One's going to be way up north. One's going to be more south. So portable car is going to be way out of jurisdictions. But they are heading to the state police officer and the other officer down south's funeral.
Okay.
Just so you know, when you're aware that those cars will be way gone. Okay. Cause it's almost to Michigan, I think. So.
Uh, Alex? Oh, Clark, um, Missy, sorry. I was gonna ask you last. I didn't, I didn't skip you or anything. I just, I just seen if Alex was awake.
But I don't have anything for you unless you have questions for me.
No. But, okay. All right, Missy.
Is that true?
Okay. Public comment. No. Okay. Well, I, I'll let you talk on town council.
It's not town council. Do you want me to go?
Well, no, you're fine. Yeah. Yes, please.
The council, I talked to Joe, um, the wine garage is celebrating three oh five day, um, March eighteenth. And if the weather is permitting, we were wondering if we could go out into the patio. We've got our alcohol contained to our little patio. But we're going to have games and stuff. Um, we did it last year and it was fun and it. People were walking by and playing cornhole and stuff.
Have you, have you filled out your event planner?
I don't need to because I'm not closing down the street. Um, it's all in, I accept that like kind of like if anybody's walking by or wants to go out and play a game. Anybody's welcome. Not for an event. I just wanted to let you know and make sure it was okay that we could utilize that patio.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all right? Okay. Oh, thank you. And then, um, the other thing I want, oh, I've got two more things. Um, no, one more thing. Um. I, uh. The main street shops have always tried to, um. Have like girls night out and things like that. And it's changed over the years. It used to be super successful and now it's, it's, it's not as successful. Um, and so I wanted to promote more walkability, um, to all the restaurants and businesses without closing down Main Street. Um, and so I've talked to, um, the Fortville Music Garage gang and, um, Sherry Jones at Studio three oh nine. Um, about doing, uh, and some of the restaurants. I haven't talked to all the restaurants yet. Um, about doing a thing called meetup on main and we would like to do it, um, May twentieth. Again, we're not closing down any streets, so I haven't filled out an event form. Um. And Benny's is going to sponsor it. Um, and, uh, there will be an art component where, um. If restaurants have art or, uh, shops have art, they can have an open house kind of thing. Um, we'll also have, um, plein air artists along Main Street. And there will be a community art activity that you can add your art to it. So that will be super fun. And then the Fortville Music Garage, um, wants to put, um, acoustic musicians. Um, guitar, saxophone, whatever, and kind of sprinkle them around town. Uh, we thought putting them in Landmark Park and if. Fortville Action is at a place where they're ready to talk about their project, maybe they could be there too. Um, and then I was going to ask the restaurants if they wanted to set up free booths, um, uh, on the patio. Um, and sell like a special that night, like Brits, if you want to sell pizzas or, um, if you have like breadsticks that are like your favorite thing to make, um.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was okay with everyone that we did that.
Yeah, it sounds neat.
Sounds like fun.
Yep.
The, uh, the barrels over there, they need drains and.
I'm going to talk to.
But the, the problem with the drain though, cause I've got them in my pots. You gotta put a lot of rock on the bottom. Cause you're going to have that silk come out the bottom. And mine's washed away after, you know, two years. So you're going to have your rain, your barrels are filling up full of water. So they're just, plants are going to die.
It's stinky.
Oh, they are. Might have to be more on top then. Okay. I just wanted to let you know they were all full the other day.
I know.
Full all the way, are they with concrete? No. Order of the way or something. Yeah, okay.
No, with all the.
That's good. That's good. Yeah, that's great.
They were smiling. Yeah. And then I have one more thing, but that's a town council thing, so I can wait.
Oh, come on up, uh, Dave. I knew you were here for a re, you just forgot you wanted public comment.
Dave Beeson, resident, Fortville. I was wondering in, uh. The, uh. Comp, comp plan, you had, had some amendments to it or something last week that. I didn't know if I understood what you talked about or, uh, can you explain that more thoroughly?
On the comp plan, I don't think there was a lot of change.
Now I can give you a quick overview of that. So.
Wonderful.
Um. At, uh, there was a study committee that was formed. It was made up of, um. Two council members and three. Plant commission members. And the problem that we're trying to solve is. The comprehensive plan map. That has been in place since twenty sixteen is outdated. And so, um. The first step that we took was, uh, council and plant commission authorized formation of this committee. And they analyzed. Two specific things. Um, one is the comprehensive plan boundary. And then secondly. They evaluated the list of different possible land uses that would be placed on the map. Um, as a result of that committee meeting. Um, we'd like to have a public workshop in the near future. Whereby, um, the public would be invited to this workshop. We'd have different maps available. And, um, they can pick and choose the different land uses that are available and basically plop them on the map to see, um, what they would like to see.
Around. Public property, you're saying that land uses.
So.
Or is it?
Sure. So, um.
Down owned land?
No. So, uh, first one, we talk about. Uh, briefly, the, the comprehensive plan and its function is that the comprehensive plan is different from zoning. So zoning, um. It's not the intent to affect zoning. Um, zoning tells you what you can do with your property right now. The comprehensive plan is simply an advisory document that both the plant commission, the council and the public and developers. Use as a guide.
Right.
Towards future development. And in this case, we'd be looking at probably the entire build out of Fortville, which could take obviously decades and decades. And so, um. So again, it's very early on in the process and then, uh, what I would anticipate is after we have this workshop. That, um, we would, as staff, put together, um, a map that would. Um, show where each of those land uses would be located. And the comprehensive plan really comes into effect. When somebody wants to redevelop their property and they want to rezone it. Um, that's when you always take a look at the comprehensive plan and to see if it's in conformance with that or not. So it's really a great opportunity and we would certainly, um. Want people in Fortville and even in, really any of the areas that are covered by the geographic area. Um, to participate in, in setting some of the future land uses. Um, and at this point in time, we don't anticipate. Doing any other amendments to the comprehensive plan itself in terms of the, um, the text of it, the goals. A lot of those are still relevant today. It was really just that map that was really out of date. So.
Do we have any vacant land that's still developed that seem like. Uh, my, uh, concept of the town, it's all developed, you know, and, uh, we were trying to annex. To have future growth, but that fell through. So what are we talking about in vacant land to be used?
Well, so in terms of, um, vacant land, it includes, um. It really fills out the rest of Vernon Township to the south and to the east of us. Uh, and also does go into, um, Madison County and into a little portion of Hamilton County and.
Just talking town limits.
That's right. And so, um, another good point, um, and we'll put this up on a PowerPoint. You know, I'll, um, have bullet points on these different i- uh, items so that they're easier to remember, but, um. For the areas that are outside of our town limits, um, it's, it's very advisory because people can develop. Um, in unincorporated Hancock County and they would develop according to the Hancock County plan. Um, but the whole, uh, again, the problem that we're trying to solve is that the, the map in twenty sixteen. Um, really did not provide much guidance for growth outside of our. Town limits. And so if you've noticed over the last. Five years at least, when there have been new proposals to come in for new planning developments, new commercial developments. Um, a lot of times it would say agricultural. Um, or it may show something vastly different from what was being proposed. And so. Um, we wanted to have the, the decision makers and the plant commission. Um, to be on the same page for what the community's vision is for, um, Fortville and the surrounding area. And then lastly. Um, in terms of annexation, uh, that the town's policy has always been, and I'm assuming it would continue this way as well. Is that, um, annexations would be voluntary. And so, um, while there, there is an ability in state law to do involuntary annexations, um. The whole premise for choosing the geography that was chosen is really to provide guidance. So when. Farmland does come into the town on a voluntary basis. Um, there's a blueprint for how those areas could grow. So. If there's any other, it's a good, glad you raised those questions and, um. If you have any other questions.
That's, uh, all the growth, all the annexation we wanted to do and didn't get it done, but. Um, we're growing. As a town limit anyway, because they built a. Built a subdivision and asked for that land to be brought into the town, which is working even better, I think.
Right.
So I had all one more thing. How many cops you got on? This apartment now?
We have, uh, lots for twelve full time.
Okay.
Add eleven to build. One going through the. At eleventh build, one going through the process of getting
Yeah.
medical, psychological. We have five current reserves. Um, and I'd like to put two more on this year.
All right.
Right around uh, nineteen.
Okay, just wondering. That's all I got.
Yep.
Thank you. All righty. I'm gonna do, um, Brian, uh, comment?
Not for me, not tonight.
Becky? I don't have anything, Tanya? All right.
All right. Five committee member for the um, banners on uh, around town. Did a really good job. It wouldn't have gotten this far if we didn't have Joe Brenner on the committee. But what I'm really excited about is that um, Cindy Carmack came to us with um, the hometown hero banner idea and she has communicated to us, she's already got people interested. Um, so that's really exciting, but what I really love is that she brought the opportunity of Michigan. And then we were like, well, heck, let's just do Merrill. So and then the RDC giving us money, maybe, maybe we're gonna ask for money. Um, it's just really, really exciting for me. Um, so Joe and I went through um, and um, we started with holiday flags or holiday banners and snowflakes and then it's grown to American flags and welcome to Fortville. Fortville, yeah, well, and with the hometown hero flags will line those streets and it's amazing, so um, uh, and, and snowflakes. Yeah, so, and this is what I, um, I think is really cool. We have, we have winter fest, summer fest, treats on main, Cammy's cause, farmer's market, things that are happening all the time and they can have flags made and we can have them up and look like we're a very organized um, supportive community. So I am super excited to have been on this committee and for all of you, you missed out. This was a good one.
All right, I'll rent you a cherry picker. Can I get a motion to approve and sign vouchers?
I make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
All in favor? I oppose. The eyes have it. Can I get a motion for a jump?
I second.
All in favor? I oppose. Eyes have it. Thank you. One of these days I'm gonna say nah.